To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, governed by God, in this law of liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for joining tonight. We had having taken role, we determine a quorum. With all members present, we move on to approval of, uh, of the agenda. Any additions? Corrections?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Alrighty. Uh, we go to approval of minutes. We've got the March seventh. The March twenty-first work session. Uh, no, no, March, March twenty-first and its executive session minutes as well. And then we have the work session minutes from March fourteenth. Counsel, what is your wish?
Present minutes for all those meetings.
We have a motion to approve all those as presented. A second. A second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Alright, and then we have pay bills. You all have, uh, that, uh, report presented to you. Question?
Approve the bills?
We have a motion to approve the payment of bills, we have a second? We have a second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Alrighty. Thank you again Tracy, probably work on that.
You're welcome.
And we'll move on to citizen participation. We have two items on the agenda there tonight, um, and the first is our second reading of the limited urban agriculture ordinance.
Hey Mayor, um... Jim just ran off to grab a... Two of them, I only have the first one here, and I'll go ahead and read that.
Okay.
Ordinance amending town code section four, one, zero, one to allow a limited number of agricultural animals within Thermopolis town limits. Whereas section four dash one zero one prohibited all agricultural livestock within the limits of the Thermopolis hot springs county of Wyoming. And whereas the citizens of Thermopolis Wyoming requested the code be amended to allow for a limited agricultural use within the town limits. And whereas review and investigation of other Wyoming incorporated town ordinances allowing agricultural animals within town limits. Counsel deems it appropriate and within the best interest of the citizens and the town to allow a limited agricultural allowance for some animals within town limits with restrictions. Now therefore be it ordained by the governing body of the town of Thermopolis. Section one, no person, firm, partnership, corporation, or association shall keep, harbor, stable, pen, or maintain horses, mules, asses, cattle, meat or otherwise, swine, pigs, geese, turkeys, or other livestock except those listed within the exceptions. And nothing herein shall be construed to mean or include dogs, cats, or household pets on any premises within the corporate limits of the town. Section two, exception for keeping of chickens within town limits. Total of up to ten chickens are allowed. B, all chickens must be kept behind the six-foot fenced perimeter. C, a covered pen, run, housing, or coop with no structure rising higher than the fence lines required to provide shelter from the elements and predators. This ordinance shall not preclude any structures authorized by another section of the town code. D, all pen, run, housing, or coops must be offset from the property line by five feet minimum from the property boundary. E, a minimum of four square feet of space per bird is required to keep chickens. F, no roosters over the age of four months is allowed within town limits. Section three, exception for keeping of ducks within town limits. A, minimum requirements for keeping chickens shall also apply to ducks. B, if ducks are allowed to roam outside of the ten, run, housing, or coops, they shall have their wings clipped. C, only the duck breeds of Indian runner, muscovy, roban, and conas, pecking, and khaki campbells are allowed. Section four, exceptions for keeping of miniature or dwarf goats within town limits. A, miniature and dwarf goats for the purposes of this ordinance are defined as any goat smaller than twenty-six inches at the withers. B, no more and no less than two adult goats over the age of four months shall be allowed. C, no intact males shall be kept within town limits. D, a six-foot perimeter fence shall be required with an interior pen for the goats, having a height of forty-eight inches to fifty-two inches. E, housing of at least thirty square feet is required provided shelter from the elements. F, the pen area for the goats must be a minimum of one hundred and thirties square feet, an offset from the perimeter fence by at least three, excuse me, five feet. Pens and housing for the goats are not allowed to be kept in front of yards. H, louder screaming goats must be quieted or removed from the town limits within the same twenty-four hours of the owner being notified. Section five, exception for keeping of rabbits within town limits. A maximum of ten rabbits are allowed. B, rabbit cages or housing shall be a minimum of five square feet with a roof height minimum of sixteen inches. Section six, adequate water, food, and shelter must be maintained for the livestock. Better to provide adequate water, food, and shelter for the livestock is a violation of cruelty codes within section four, four oh one to four, four oh two of the town code of Thermopolis. Section seven, animal waste must be disposed of or treated in a manner in which foul odors and runoff are prevented from entering adjoining properties or public right of lands. Section eight, the limited agricultural exception shall only be allowed on single-family dwelling properties. The property's rented property written permission from the landlord with contact information at least must be provided when applying for a permit. Section nine, permits are required for the limited agricultural exception within town limits. Permits are fifty dollars per species and so, and shall receive a twenty-five dollar discount for demonstrating a certificate of having completed an approved course for carrying of urban livestock. Each permitee shall have their facilities inspected and approved before the issuance of a permit. Section ten, only two species can be permitted allowed on one property. Only a total of ten animals described in the above livestock exception are allowed on one property within the town limits. And section ten violations of this ordinance will be subject to the penalties of code section four dash one oh two. It was the old email, I'll have to pull the old ones up.
Did, did they make any changes in four oh one?
Yeah, well, I made changes in four dash four oh one. So the other, the other two are the same.
Can't believe I don't have them in the chicken board.
While I pull that up, you can go ahead and have any discussion.
See, we can discuss on the part those that's read to us, any... Changes or discussion on that, the other part of the ordinance will be coming shortly.
One thing, and I don't know, you know, we have some of the numbers for what it costs for permits, but do we need to specify what L P's are for some of these?
That's coming up in what Marshall's about to read, yeah?
Yep. Yeah, those, those were the other two ordinances that I need to read for a second, but they didn't change from the last, they haven't.
If you want me to go ahead and read those now for... Yeah, I think go ahead.
Uh, ordinance amending town code section four one oh two declaring agricultural animals kept in violation of town ordinance a nuisance. Whereas section four one oh one is being amended to allow a certain number of class of agricultural livestock within town limits. Whereas the governing body having reviewed and invest- investigated other town ordinances within the state of Wyoming, find the code declaring livestock a nuisance within town limits needs to be updated in the best interest of the citizens of Thermopolis to provide for penalties to enforce the new limited livestock ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the governing body of town of Thermopolis. Section one, the keeping, harboring, stabilizing, penning, or maintaining of said livestock and poultry in violation of town code section four oh one oh one, amended within the corporate town limits shall pay a fine double that of the permit fee for the first offense. Section two, the second offense of violation four one oh one within five years shall result in a two hundred dollar fine. Section three, for the third offense of violating section four one oh one, the offender shall pay a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine. Be prohibited from getting another animal permit for five years, and the property shall be declared a nuisance, and the town may abate in the manner provided by law for the abatement of a nuisance. An ordinance amending town code section four two oh one, stock running at large declared a nuisance. Whereas section four dash one oh one and four dash one oh two have been amended to allow limited livestock class and numbers within town limits. Whereas section four two one also needs to be updated to reflect changes made in the livestock exceptions. Now therefore be it ordained by the governing body of the town of Thermopolis, all animals not permitted in section four one oh one, dogs or cats running at large within corporate town limits are hereby declared be a nuisance, and any persons or persons being the owners or harborsers of any such animals are foul and who shall allow the same to run at large or be found at large within such corporate limits shall be deemed the author of a nuisance for such, for each said animals or foul. Section two, animals permitted in section four one oh one shall be required to pay the fines and penalties in four one oh two for being at large. Section three, upon third violation of animals permitted for one oh one being at large, they are deemed a nuisance and subject to nuisance abatement codes and law.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any discussion on any of... Any of those particular topics? I think we did a good job hitting the changes we discussed in the previous council meeting. It's not an official public hearing, but if there is anybody in the public that wanted to make a brief statement regarding the ordinance, you certainly can address the council and I'll limit to three minutes.
Darren Butcher, uh, I would, having presented this, you know, and discussed it, the original model for me, it wouldn't fit within the ten limit or the two species. And I, I couldn't find that in any research or anything like that on why that was, was added, but for me, I would like a number to be fourteen total with the two species restriction removed. And for me personally, that would mean five chickens, four ducks, three rabbits, two dwarf goats, and so I wouldn't, and with the maxes staying the same. So if, if that could be amended or at least discussed, that would...
Tell me that again, dear.
Uh, if we could get the max number of animals to fourteen, and then the two species restriction removed, I think that...
And then is section ten on... See, that's section ten on the one you have in front of you. So remove, you would like to see the two species removed?
With, with the limits maintaining with the max being fourteen. To hit the, for the original model that, of why I presented this in the first place, for me personally, whether that fits the town or not, I, I respect that, but that's what I would request.
Counsel, are you, uh, following the request there?
I got the purpose of the two species going on there in the beginning of the last...
I would like to just have the two species restriction removed, so people can have a combination of all four animals with a total number being fourteen, if possible, please.
Let's see, is that section ten?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah. I have gotten myself so discombobulated here. So moving that to the four, to fourteen maximum.
Yes, sir.
Fourteen total animals. So you'd still have the ten?
No limit to species.
Yeah, no li-
Just a limit to your animals.
Yeah, so someone can't have ten, ten, ten? Yes.
Right.
Cause, but if someone wanted ten chickens, they could have that, and then they could, but if the combination for me when I originally started this, excuse me, sorry.
And then like two goats, two rabbits.
And this was just a sustainability thing beyond hobby farming, because you can get certain amount of, you know, from each animal to sustain a certain family, that was the reason. So with the two species restriction, that kind of kicks that back, and so you might have to see me again.
So... Marshall, are you tracking on that as well?
Yeah, I understand what he's asking.
I, I would like to see though that the, the birds, because then you could essentially do seven chickens and seven ducks. If we word it that way, so maybe we keep it at ten, no more than ten, I know we're going away from keeping it simple, but...
I, Mr. Van, I did have like a restriction for like if you did that, max five chicken, or ten chickens, five ducks, five rabbits, two dwarf goats. But I didn't want to get into what you guys already had, so...
Yeah.
But that would be the idea, so you can't have, because I mean, you get seven and seven, but I didn't know why the, with Mr. Lewis there with the two species, I didn't know where that came from. And the whole presentation with the dialogue back and forth, so I just wanted to ask that. But, uh, I think it would, it wouldn't be bad, I mean, if someone did have seven chickens and seven ducks, I mean, it's not necessarily a problem more than, you know, three less. You, you know, you're splitting hairs at that point, but, but, uh, personally speaking.
Okay. So Counsel, that's heard, pretty considered, if you want to make an amend on that. We'll, um, keep, keep your notes on that here for a minute, and then, um, we'll, we'll recognize the gentleman here in the back.
My name is John Roden, uh, I have a house here in town, and my father has a ranch west of town. We have cows and pigs and chickens out there, and over the years, my mom's had ducks and geese. But I've had a personal experience in a residential setting, living next to chickens and ducks in Casper. And wisely, the council outlawed chickens and ducks there, but obscure law, if they're four H, the kids could have them. So one morning I woke up the chickens and ducks, and over the course of two summers, a winter and a fall, the smell was unbelievable. I couldn't even open the windows on my house next to that property. Sometimes the smell would even come around in front of the house. The flies were unbelievable. Now since, now I've, I filed some complaints, I talked to the owners about it several times, they just didn't seem to want to do anything about it. But, uh, talked to Metro, had to go through a three-time deal like you guys sort of have, and they finally had to get rid of them. And things back to normal down there now. But I think you guys are opening up a can of worms here that could be a big nuisance, and we've got deer in town, anyway, that are nuisance. And I think as far as your rules go, I think you ought to have the homeowners on each side approve. You know, if somebody wants chickens or ducks, because you guys seem to be wanting to go through with this, but, uh, I sure don't want them next to me in town. That's all I have to say about it.
Well, thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to make any statement for the council's consideration? Seeing none, our counsel will kick it back to you for any further discussion on anything that was just presented in addition, um... On that, or if you want to consider some conversation on Mr. Butcher's request.
I did kind of just have the thought of, maybe not on the front end of approval with your neighbors, but at least as, as recourse if you had nuisance reports from, you know, joining neighbors, that they did have some kind of, I don't know, if we, if we gave them some sort of, like, stand on within this that like, you know, if your neighbors around you were all saying the same thing, and it really appears that, yeah, it's a problem, then it's a problem.
Marshall, would you see any, um, way that that might, like, progress you along in the, in our tier of enforcement? Like, if you got three neighbors, all complaining at the same time, it might move you to the second level of action, or?
Well, I think if you just even go to section seven where, you know, if someone reports a foul odor, or they can run, when, under runoff, and officer shows up and says, "Yeah, that, that stinks," you're getting your first fine, and then it doesn't get taken care of, that's a two hundred dollar fine, and then the third one's seven fifty, you're losing everything.
Yeah, that's fine, but, yeah.
And it, and our, our intention and the reason we, we brought, you know, the PD into, into the conversation with that too, is to make sure that we did have some teeth in the ordinance. And I, it's not going to be, um, as far as the mayor's office stance, we're, we're, it's, it's going to be a privilege to get to have, um, livestock on your property. So that's why we kind of had worded it that way, but if you're comfortable with that. Obviously, if we're getting multiple complaints, we're going to be getting out there. The other thing to remember is, um, in this whole process, Jim and I are going to put a reminder on the calendar a year from now to revisit and review how things have gone, what the call log has been like, what the complaints have been like, and, and, and take a review of the matter then too, so... So does anybody want to make a motion then to, um, make the correction, or do we want to keep it this, keep it as it was presented as far as the maximum allowed? What is your wish there, Counsel?
Make a motion.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Our, uh, last meeting, wasn't there a stipulation in there that if you had, uh, chickens and ducks, then that was kept to ten?
Yeah, but I-
Isn't that how it was worded?
I believe in the last... Yeah, the last one was, was, um, section ten, read as only two species can be permitted and allowed on one property for permitting, for permitting purposes, ducks and chickens shall be considered one species. Yeah.
Read it to fourteen.
But then we upped it to fourteen, so that...
Well, if you keep the...
Right.
I think you found the answer as well, excuse me for speaking up.
So fill me in on that, I, I was, I was reading it in here, yeah?
Uh, the last meeting, we had it, a stipulation with if you had two different, so if you had ducks and chickens, that would be kept to ten in its whole. And then if we upped it to fourteen, you could still allow for two goats, two rabbits, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But...
So the language where it said...
Keeping your, keeping your fowl down, you're, you actually have a, a limit on the fowl that you have. Does that make sense? Or no, my way out of line.
So, let me, let me read from what was, I have the one from last meeting right here, so, um, only two species can be permitted and allowed on one property. For permitting purposes, ducks and chickens shall be considered one species, and only a total of ten foul are allowed. So that would kind of answer if we had concerns about getting the number of foul above that, ten. Darren, was there something I wanted to add?
I think just getting, excuse me, Mr. Van, this is, uh, just getting the two species thing, I think, would answer what you're saying, if I heard you correctly, like, is, once again, five chickens, four ducks, three rabbits, two dwarf goats on my property, that would still be, if my math is correct, that would be fourteen total, so...
Fourteen total, and if we stipulated it would be three species, then if we kept that stipulation in there.
And so I would like just people to be able to have all four, that's the original reason for it, so...
Yeah.
You get all into the, the two species, and I don't, once again, I would just ask, like, even where that even, in all my studies of all...
No clue where.
Yeah, it kind of just...
So if it, if, let's just hash it all the way out. It would be, um, a maximum of fourteen animals allowed, but no more than a combination, no more than ten maximum foul.
Right.
But no limit on species.
Right, which would, there's only being three technically presented.
Because you're counting chickens and ducks, yeah.
If we kept that in there.
Yeah. And then we could leave that to the wordsmith. To make it sound nice. What are your, uh, what are your thoughts on that, Counsel?
I'm good with it.
Would that be the only, only thing would really be amending from this reading to the third?
And then a couple of, uh, tigils. Tigil, and then is it supposed to be three feet, five feet?
Right, it's supposed to be five. Okay, then if there's no more discussion on that, I entertain a motion for the amendment. We have a motion for the amendment on section ten. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Alright, then we go to approving the second reading. I'll entertain a motion for that. We have a motion to approve the second reading, do we have a second?
Second.
Seeing a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. The motion prevails, we'll move on to the third, uh, third reading at our next meeting, um, and that'll be, that will be posted in the paper on the... So it'll be the twentieth, that would maybe. No, it'll be the thirteenth. So we'll maybe get that put together, won't we? It'll have to be the week before. We have to post the ordinance.
Not till it's approved.
Till it's approved, okay.
And we just do, we just do the title of the ordinance, that's all we're required to.
Okay, okay. So, we will work through that. Alrighty. Thank you everyone for that. Alright, we'll move on to our second item in, uh, citizen participation, and that is the Big Horn Basin Nature and Discovery Center.
Can I do real quick? Um, we're actually going to take T M U tonight, so I'm going to turn the floor over to Brad. And then we brought, have Ginger and Kyle here to talk about the actual plan, and then I can answer any of the match questions that you might have. Do you mind if I hand out a brochure to the people here?
That's fine.
That explains the project, and then I'll do that while Brad's talking.
Perfect.
Hello, my name's Brad. Um, so I'm on the board of the Big Horn Nature and Discovery Center. Essentially, we're coming to you guys, um, the, we're filing for a TAP grant, uh, the commissioners usually sponsor us for the TAP grants, um, for the joint power board. They are wanting to file a TAP grant for a planning, and we are now into our construction phase, we kind of did our planning through them. And now we're coming to you guys to see if you guys would be our sponsor for the construction portion. And, uh, Ginger and Kyle kind of have the, the breakdown of the phases, we're going to do that in two phases. And I'll kind of turn it over to them to kind of fill you on what our, what our plans are.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm the mayor and counsel, my name's Ginger Brown, I'm, um, the engineer for the joint power group, um, helping on this plan. You all have a map, is that what I understand in your packet?
Yep.
Okay. Kyle, would you like to go first?
No, I want you to go first.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, um, with the TAP grant funds, um, that the board has currently, um, we are working on the design, construction plans for, um, what will end up being two phases of construction. So for the project, we will be looking to, sorry, let me just see what map you guys have here, uh, here, it's not colored, sorry, I actually stepped off, but...
They should have the map.
They should have it.
I have the copies here, and like, they're easiest, if we just find them.
And like the easiest, if we just find the handout.
Please, yeah. Thank you.
You can see the color, it makes just a little bit more sense.
So for the beginning, um, of this project, we will have an entrance into the site, and that'll be down on the southern park. Uh, you'd enter into the site, um, for a parking area, and now for future development of the site, they do want, um, a, um...
An exhibit.
An exhibit center, um, you know, one day, so we've saved space on the south side of the property for that. So parking area for now, um, to provide access to the trails on the site, uh, disc golf course, and other amenities that can be out there for the community. So passenger parking, that road will continue through the site, and that's the orange, and so orange will be phase one, is what we're looking at for construction right now. Continue through the site, and then you would exit, um, across from-